I have documents to present.
It's just information, it's not a discussion.
No, that's fine, I just didn't think so, it's not saying you're immune before now, so it won't make any sense.
That's fine, I'm not demanding it.
We provide, of the United States of America, and as we in the Republic, for ladies and gentlemen, one nation, under God, indivisible, created in the first of all. Prove an agenda of the agenda, except for on September 1st, September 28th.
No, we're on September 1st.
The agenda of October.
Yeah, we had it on September 1st.
Motion. Back up.
Your vote, Jim?
Yes.
Your vote?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, approval of regular meeting minutes from July 28th. Make sure it's been reflected in the beginning, right at the beginning. I'll make the vote here in that one. Back up. I can make one correction.
Uh, we've made, over the last thirty-four months, motions to ban the, uh, legal use of the coin handle to it, and not showing up on it.
Was there a motion made, expecting to go down?
Uh, April 21st, making.
Yeah, this is July 28th.
Yes, that's been done every month since.
Your daughter's July 28th.
I'm saying that this motion just put it every month, 'cause April 21st, and it's still not carried.
They don't, the motion's still carried over.
So I'm, I don't know, I mean, I understand that this will be put on the agenda each time, but it's still not carried.
Then you get to get it, I'll get it, get it, get it, you know, you just.
As I've done every month, since April 21st.
We're special working for you, however, we just can't sit there and not figure it out, and spend all that time avoiding the need of the right.
I understand, ma'am, it's not up to me to set that part of it.
I understand what it's under, so, you know.
Okay, you want to tell us, you want to give us your worst situation, if I'm going to do that.
Back up.
Your vote, Jim?
Yes.
Your vote?
Yes.
Here you go. This Debbie. On here. What's the name?
Okay, I have three items, my first one is, may we please have a community yard sale on October 9th and 10th? For the whole town.
Is that really up to you, or is it to you, or?
Last year it was tried, but only two places, people didn't know about it.
But it's not up to me?
I don't know who wrote it, I haven't. I don't want.
I don't think that's a, you're trying to, if not, would you consider going on October, which is possibly, could, okay.
No, 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 October 9th.
You got a big job.
Oh, sorry. I don't believe this, sorry, I can't. So you don't have to approve?
Nope.
Okay. That's, my second is. I think everybody thought last year it was put on my account, and nobody came, it wasn't advertised, and only two people even sent out.
Did you do that on Facebook?
I, I mean, I don't know who did, who did, it's like, yeah.
Maybe give him a couple years, I don't, it's not a good, no, yeah.
Okay, my second issue is, animal control, I'm Mark Lomero. Um, Joe Grino has at least twenty dogs now, that his two, we now have had, three turfs, don't even have a fence, these dogs are out, I don't understand why, there isn't a fence, anyway. Uh, these dogs are not getting skin, safety issues with our kids and pets, Adam Conover, sir, is very much aware of the situation, and has done nothing, that I know of, since May, early May. Um, we had planned, he acted like he was all ready with humane society, we had plans for those dogs to go to safe place, then Derek decided to be the dog catcher, instead of capturing the loose dogs, they went into the yard and traumatized five.
Excuse me, where did Derek decide to be the dog catcher?
I have no idea.
He's always been the dog catcher.
And all I can is. Okay, so instead of catching the loose dogs, he went into the yard, traumatized five of their dogs, now I am being taken to court for getting, telling Derek that Noah's Park is full. It's full, they're not taking any animals from anywhere, I went yesterday, they're not doing vaccinations, they're not doing spay neuter, we have a serious problem in this town of unspayed animals, unless you like, three different groups now, pet losers. They care about animals.
You don't need to guess over taking, because everyone, we pride, we won't take them.
Because they're full, okay, so, going to court now, my dog and I have been attacked and injured by Gabby's dogs, the magistrate ordered the dogs to be removed if any more issues, Gabby's dogs killed Robert's cat, this cat was beloved by many. Their dogs are still here, again, attacked by pit bulls, in October, do you remember when you told me all four dogs have gone, Mark?
October when?
This year, October.
No, I didn't, I told you October, two years ago.
I just got attacked in October.
I don't know, that was your fault, I told you two years ago, I'm trying to take care of it.
They're still here, okay, um, attacked by two pit bulls that injured me on all ends, I donated a gift ticket, I never know what happens to these people that hurt me. There's no information, there's no transparency, there's no, yeah, common can.
Can you hold up your finger and explain everything?
He's not here anymore.
I did not, he said he held up the finger.
I did, nothing happened, common was not, for a lot, I'm sorry, okay, so, I don't know if anybody has a ticket, uh, one dog went to Noah's Park, down, the other one, I don't know, um, they live across from the school. I think we should do more concern about safety in this town, okay, has anyone ever been held accountable for their actions in this town, it's less than a skeleton, and tired, and tired and injured by animals that need to be controlled by their owners, I suggest that we have our own nonprofit rescue shelter to help our town animals, get them vaccinated and fixed.
We look into that, and the thousands, it costs so much, and there's so much liability with that, I mean, it's just awful for the town, if they have any point, huh?
So where do we have to go?
You know, your question is about as good as ours, but like I say, we used to take the Noah's Park all the time, but then they got full, Walsworth, they got such a little facility, they won't pay them, so, we're looking for different outlets, no way to do it.
And I have a suggestion, about this problem, you know, becoming the problems, is becoming the solutions, so I'd like to make a suggestion as a solution, I noticed that in town, there's a lot of vacant houses, that people have just abandoned, so instead of trying to put it out on the town hall, it's their problem, I think it's all our problem, because it's, it's overlapping into all of our properties and stuff, so let's come together as, as a town jerk, and if we can, take one of those properties, you volunteer, because a lot of people like to volunteer, let's kind of do something like a Noah's Park community private property, so let's kind of base it on volunteerism, you know? It's grants. Obviously, you might contribute, you're giving some food sometime, but you have the animals, but if you put it out to a town, you know, I think we can solve it, not just put it on the town hall, just make this all accountable, let's come together as a community, like we should be, you know? So it shouldn't be one person's problem, let's, let's make this town more attractive, so people will want to come and stay and invest in the town, that's the solution, so instead of putting out people, let's all come together and have a town, and let's work together finally, you know? That's why I see that.
What do I do?
That's good.
And you know what, I'm gonna do this, no, please, the town people, we're committed, the town, put the information out by your newsletter, anybody who wants to volunteer, you know, who uses it all, we come together with your justice materials, the town, you tell us, you know, there's a piece of comment that we can use, I think it's sort of a ballot thing, where, it's not one person's problem, yeah, we're, yeah, let's make it a fun town again.
You want, you want to read that up?
To me, I have enough animals, I don't want to take care of that, I'm definitely, we don't have.
Yeah, dude, what, what we need is like, for insurance, uh, everything that they need, for, for another facility like that.
Yeah.
And right now, like I say, for the town, it's way, it's all.
Well, let's do that, let's put in your newsletter, you're saying, this comment is a suggestion, we can do a meeting, because I know nothing about the county insurance and stuff like that, can you make, uh, representation, go to the town, you tell us, what is the liability for, you know?
What do I do?
I can see what you're stopping, you know all that, none of us know that.
That's a good idea, thank you.
So it's sharing, that information's a little important.
Yeah, it would, thank you.
Okay, then my last, one week, is something I just have to share. You're gonna read this.
Yeah, five minutes. It's already up.
Wait, this is, really?
It's now.
Well, you all have the letters, so you all know the truth, written by my aunt in nineteen ninety-six to me, asking me for, to come for Christmas, you all have been harassing me because of my aunt, I got nothing, I lost everything in Denver, I've been in court for ten years, and I'm tired, I've exhausted stock. And the only, no.
All right, uh.
I rest the whole time I'm sitting here, stop that, Jared.
There, Mr. Brunner.
All right, I have three, I have three different problems, one of them that I really want to get off, and that, I've got all of them, I'm starting from, what else?
So let's, you know.
How's this?
Yeah, I can read it now.
I have one, uh, Kyra, she's filed this restraining order, and I know everyone thinks this is old news, but, to me, it's not, whenever my record gets run on the course, this thing comes popping up, it was filed on March twenty-third, and it was signed by Kyra, saying that I was stalking, harassing her, and was a stalking, physical assault threat, or other situation. This was thirty days before, uh, I took my seat on the board, and then this parts of the complaints are, let's see, I've been stalked by this man three years now, and he is using social media to make threats to me for my job, this man was scheduled to be seated on my council next month, April, I care for mine and my children's life, this guy's just unstable and will not leave me alone, this has gone on since August twenty-twenty, April, May, June, twenty-twenty-one, January, February, March twenty-twenty-two. She also stated, in twenty-twenty-one, to her work email, I stated, I'm coming for her, I'd like to see that email, that has never been said by me, I've never made a threat, uh, and he says, I had a call on personal cell on weekends harassing me to answer his emails. Okay, I draw.
Well, you got, you got three guilty to, to go over, so.
Honestly, what does this even have to do with work?
What does have to do with work, you filed false charges against me, and you lied.
Don't try to be around me, I'm not.
You were not.
No, I just, look, she filed false charges, she lied in court, she defamed my character, she lied.
Boy, have you seen her YouTube videos, you defending me.
Excuse me, those YouTube videos are not mine.
Yes, they are.
And you're just burning up the time that I have.
Well, go on with your next one.
Excuse me?
Go on with your next one, you have to.
Here, go here. You guys, you're gonna talk the time against me, that she's arguing with me while I'm trying to present this.
Like I say, you have three different, you got three different separate ones, correct?
Right.
Okay, you got five minutes, go ahead and talk about it.
You're giving me five minutes for all three?
Yes, sir.
You guys are full of crap, I filed three separate agendas, then you're wasting my time by arguing with me whenever I'm trying to present this, you don't want this to come out, but it's going to come out.
Hey, can I address my son, then?
Could you get hold of this woman and set her, and get her quit interrupting me?
Well, keep going, I mean, you both got it, that's enough, and both, go ahead, you're, you're.
This is all my record, that she put there, and I have here records of all of her phone numbers that I could find, plus I have my personal phone records for the last two years, and in that, it shows that there was one call between me and her on the weekend, or even on her home number, and that was for twenty-one minutes, where she called me. So that was a direct lie.
If I may speak, you know, you have, you're talking about your records.
No, you can't, it's my turn to talk.
Cut the talk, cut the talk. Cut the talk, go ahead.
You're obviously not wanting to hear anything, what she did was a felony charge if I tried to push it in court, here is the eighty pages that she filed against me, and there's a letter in here from the town attorney, saying that everything I said was my right to say.
Really, you're getting everything?
Well, you think you're the person. You obviously do not want to hear what anyone has to say, I'm sure my five minutes is probably real close to being over, I have two more issues.
Well, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give you five minutes on both, and after that.
No, I want five minutes on each one.
No, that's what you're gonna get.
No, I'm gonna give five minutes on each, that's what the rules say, and then you're wasting your time arguing with me, I get five minutes for each issue, and I file three issues due the agenda.
You get five minutes for both. Ready?
I've never seen you sit in kangaroo court, and I've been through two.
Today in court.
All right, let's move to the emergency management, my complaint on him, other than all these claims that have been filed against me, is him lying in court, you were there in court when we went to court.
Yes.
The first thing he stated was he's been employed by the town for four years, he hasn't been here even close to four years, it's more like a year and a half.
No, it's close to four years, I'm gonna check.
Would you get her to quit interrupting me? Go ahead, he claimed four years of employment, which the town, it's barely been over a year and a half, his other claim was that the bus is not a running vehicle, he believed it to be road doubt, through that whole period of time, I moved that bus all over town, he's even complained to me about me parking on Main Street, I parked it in Gerald's Lot, I parked it across the street from the park here, he tells the judge, that he had, he thought that this bus to sit that ordinance was not running.
Yeah, if I may ask.
No, you can't ask, it's my turn to talk, would you people stop?
I know, I agree with you, Donald, I gotta agree, this is a personal thing, it is, nothing to do with the town.
How is it personal, whenever I'm on the council, and the council is attacking me and the administrator on made-up charges, and that was showing in court, you were there whenever he said he didn't know this bus was running, and the only way it fit into that ordinance, that I had to defend myself on, was from his lies.
And did, did the judge rule in your favor?
I was found not guilty, which shows more that he lied.
Well, go ahead, I, I'm gonna take the time, but.
Then we come to the video. Then we come to the video of him at my house taking measurements for an ordinance that he would not tell me why he was there taking the measurements, we, and I'm sure that's probably what the video thinks set up here, towards the end of this, he comes walking towards me, yelling at me, do I have a problem with him, while I was in my pickup truck, and when he approached, he had his hand on his gun, how do you know, Kyra, you were not there?
I'm course going online, please.
I can say this is fact, where's your evidence, I, I'll, I'll, it's a, it's a, channel council allow me, I'd like to play that video.
Well, is it that one, you allowed me to speak in time, I got to speak?
Like, it's really, I don't, it might seem to make this into, to a whole exact session, or a whole different meeting, with an exact session other to your tonight.
Well, I'm here, and I just proved that two of the people that are...
Right, you can bring it to another meeting, we have a double meeting...
I didn't sign a warrant, let's see, I was, since, uh, September, is when this first came up in the meeting, and then you lost control of the meeting, and then I didn't get to finish, and each month since then, I've been trying to bring this up, and now, let's go to another meeting, when is it going to be discussed?
It's, it's already, she left, left court on this already.
On him?
Yeah, so that one's over. The one, the one, the string order, goes down the file, and then you're going to cut it, so that one's over.
So, okay, my next remark, he's actually extremely kidding me, well, it's on my records, whenever you run court record, that I have this thing filed on me, you say that's over, it's supposed to stay on my record for three to five years, and it was from lies that were made from the administrator.
Like you're filling these in your drug charges.
You have no...
Hey, come on.
You can't control it.
It's, it's, okay, here. I'm not harassing anybody, I'm doing what I'm paid to do.
You're fucking tender lace, I got a job, then you go around dressing like a cop.
I'm not, it says code enforcement, I can read English, it's clear.
I can read.
Well, that's what it said.
You know, I haven't been to a meeting in years, but, uh, I, first of all, I don't know who that guy is.
Maybe I can see us.
Why is it thirty, uh, how many, thirty, thirty seconds?
Five minutes.
Uh, time limit, is that that important for everybody to go home at that time, or what?
That's, that's the rules of, of the council, whenever anybody puts in a...
So, all of a sudden, you're starting to...
No, it's always, it's always been, I've been here for a long time.
Because, uh, I understand, I don't know that these are town enforcement, right? And this man, Jennifer asked for, uh, his gift, how come Marx, all Marx stuff around town, don't have licenses and stuff, and how come they don't get him?
We're, we're, we're probably have some without license.
Yeah, junk all over the place.
Does it, do these license plates under it, or what?
What's that?
Does it need license plates?
If they're on the street, if he's...
There's none on the street that don't have license plates.
Years, years ago, kids on the street in needed plates, and they would call them off and say, get him, what happened to that one?
Here's what they, none of y'all know how many people have gotten letters or citations, nobody knows, I can tell you some of them, they're under us.
Or, I might say it was.
There's never been a word...
That's it, that's over.
Moving on.
No, I was just...
Listen to him.
I was just curious, because, you know, I, I go around, when they first came out with this, water meter, I went around...
Listen to him.
You go down Main Street, you go out, out, you see our newly placed, water road, everything, and I went to a courthouse, and I asked them, and they said, well, you have to physically see them, I said, well, all it takes is five minutes to go down, right, and you can see it, it's on, but, you know, that's so hard, a lot trying to do the right thing, and for the whole town, not just one or two, it's the whole town that needs it.
I agree with it.
This place is, the island is turning into a junkyard, really.
All right, I'm moving on. I'd like to find that here on...
I got Marx voter registration, where he's registered to vote on Main Street here, which is part of why, I went through the court records, and found his address at two, twenty-two-eight-nine-zero-zero Lynn Road, then I went to Google Maps, that address is out of town.
Well, that was...
That's not the right one?
The way you talk about it's not the right one?
Did you give it to him directly from the president's office?
I got the voter... You know what, here's from the voter's registration.
Well, that doesn't tell me anything.
My registration is a four of six, for four of six people, what's your driver's license say?
Doesn't matter.
All right, moving on. My bottom side of it says, what I gotta do. Okay, moving on, executive session, personnel matters.
Now, three go into executive session, aren't we supposed to know, and the people supposed to know what, which is the...
Versatility! Make the vote, we're going executive session, versatility.